All right. It's seven o'clock. We're starting our meeting for Parisville City Council tonight. Welcome to our council members, welcome staff and those in the audience. Appreciate you being here. You're going to have flexible allegiance and an opening ceremony back from some other.
Please say flexible allegiance swiftly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our your Father, Heaven, we are very thankful this night to meet together. We're thankful for the opportunity to serve the great city of Parisville, serve the citizens here. Bless us to make good decisions this night and we'll be safe in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Parisville Science. First one is a discussion or possible action to consider the adoption of Parisville Resolution number twenty-two dash fifteen, which is a resolution authorizing relations as sales tax revenue bonds. And we have Mr. Marcus Keller.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to be back in front of everybody again, and I apologize that we had to get you back sooner probably than you were wanting to. Perfect. Well, tonight we do have a parameters resolution as discussed that would help set the parameters not to exceed amounts of the upcoming bond for the sales and franchise tax bond that we've discussed for those projects. And I apologize, I'm going to grab my notebook. So I don't misstate anything. And then also wanted to recognize Brandon Johnson. So Ginny and I, we did the RFP for Bond Council. We sent it to the three most active firms here in Utah. Brandon Johnson's came back as the most qualified as well as the best price. And so we went ahead and decided to select him to help us with this. So the document that we're actually looking at or the resolution that was distributed was drafted by Brandon Johnson. Parks, Sports and Johnson is the name of his firm. I'm not sure if he can hear us right now or if he's on. Maybe not. But if he does want to chime in, I may let him address some points of the document as well. And if not, then I can go through it. But so tonight's parameters resolution, what we decided to do was to give a little bit of breathing room. And perfect, there he is right now. He had another meeting, so we're kind of catching him in between meetings here. So yeah, Brandon, did you want to introduce yourself here really quick?
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't be there in person. But yeah, my name's Brandon Johnson from the law firm, Parks, Sports and Johnson, and we will be serving as Bond Council and happy to be working with the city.
Thanks, Brandon. And feel free to interrupt me if I miss anything or mess up anywhere, okay? But I work with Brandon a lot. He's done a great job. We actually just closed fifty million dollars of bonds down in Iron School District today, and it's, the market is getting better. So I'm happy to report interest rates are finally coming down, which for a while now, that hasn't been the case. But going back to the parameters resolution, so again, we wanted max flexibility here. And so what this parameters resolution today does, if it's passed by the city council, would allow the city to issue up to fifteen million dollars of sales and franchise tax bonds. This can be issued in one or multiple series of bonds, so we don't have to issue it all in one go. We could say we're going to identify certain projects, which I believe Ginny's going to be talking about later today. And we can just issue portions of that over the next year, over the next year and a half, two years. We like to keep it around the year and a half mark. Just before that, if we go past that, it's not a big deal. We just like to adopt new parameters resolution to refresh everything. It would be to not exceed five and a half percent. You may say, wow, why did we put it so high? Well, we do that in case that we go to the market and the market does a coupon structure where it will say, we're going to give you a five percent coupon, but the yield associated with that may be two percent. So what they do is they pay you premium, so it offsets that. So without getting into too much bond math, it's really just a way of selling your bonds into the, into the market. So we do set it a little bit higher to give us that flexibility if we do decide to go get a rating, go to the market and this process. I think currently, right now, we are looking at a direct purchase option, which makes it a little bit easier, probably a little less stressful in a lot of ways for the city. But we're going to explore both and we'll just do whatever's best for the city at that point. Two percent discount, again, we put that in there because the market may give you some discount bonds. Not a big deal. It's just, again, part of the bond math that gets you to your final result. Twenty-six years. Currently, we are running these bonds at twenty-five-year amortization schedules. Now, there's a couple of reasons why we're doing this. So we set it one year above, just in case we need twenty-five years in one month. We don't have to come back or if there's, you know, a little bit of difference in prepayment period. But again, this is the not to exceed amount. So if we do decide that maybe we can do better at a twenty-year rate, or maybe we go through the projects and realize we only need eight million of the X amount of million dollars, and so we can absorb more of our higher debt service, then we have the option to structure it lower, which may give you a lower interest rate. I mean, the shorter you are, the lower interest rate is going to be. But currently, as I've been looking at the numbers and I presented on that quite a bit, the idea is, you know, a lot of these times, the bonds are callable anytime or prepayable. And so if we get onto a twenty-five-year payment, so that we're trying to just minimize the debt service so you don't feel overwhelmed, especially if we do issue it just in one large bond, if we find out that's the way we want to go, then we try to keep those payments level. And then if you have additional money come in, increase sales tax growth, if you do truth and taxation, so you can move money around from your general fund to offset some of your expenses from your sales tax, then we can prepay these bonds and downsize it accordingly, but it would be based on your schedule and not mandated by the bond, if that makes sense. So again, just lots of flexibility there. And then last but not least, we do identify the projects. We say city hall, police station, public works, parks and rec and related improvements. Again, we know that we're probably going to use these for certain of the projects, but we just listed all the projects because it doesn't hurt just to have everything in there. So it does give you the option, if we do need to pull maybe a little piece into the parks or a little piece here and there, you're able to do so. Perfect. But so that's the parameters resolution before you today. If there's any questions, any concerns on that, happy to go over that. Or Brandon, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
No, Marcus, I think you, yeah, did a great job. I just wanted to reiterate two, a couple of points. One, I know that the plan is to issue these bonds, but I like to point out that if you approve this resolution and something happens and you decide not to move forward with the project or interest rates go crazy or something, you're not, the city isn't obligated to issue the bonds. This just, just gives the city the ability to issue bonds if and when you decide to do so. And then as Marcus mentioned, and I know this is something that may come in handy, these bonds can be issued in multiple series. So you could do one in three months and another series in six months or whatever it is. So that, that gives you that flexibility. And then there will be a notice associated with this that will be published in the newspaper. It's just a notice of bonds to be issued that gives the public notice that the city is considering issuing these bonds. And somewhat related to that, there will also be a public hearing held, I think it's June fourteenth, but at your June meeting, that gives the public the opportunity to come and speak to the city council about the issuance of the bonds. Sometimes in those hearings, no one shows up and sometimes there's lots of people. But just so you're aware, that, that hearing will be held in June. And that's it.
Great points. Thanks for covering that. So Brandon, I'll work with Ginny, make sure that notice gets posted. You'll give her information to post on the public notice website about the public hearing. And then, yeah, on June fourteenth, you may just open up the public hearing. It may not be anybody here and you close it, or sometimes they go a little bit longer, but just depends on the mood of the city sometimes. But that, I think that's everything we have, unless there's questions or concerns from the council or from Mayor, Ginny, anything, comments, questions that you may have on moving forward with this.
Ginny, did you want to add? So I do have a little bit, what I did is, let me screen share here for Brandon's convenience as well and the public. So I have gone through the engineer's cost estimate for our total project. He did update the cost estimates and include the twenty percent contingency that was requested to kind of give us that buffer. So I outlined these in three different categories of priority here. The public works facility and the site work and utilities, that's pretty much an immediate need due to the sale of our current public works building. So I'd outline that as the first priority of meeting the city's needs and getting started on that. So to give you a little follow-up on that, we have put out the RFP. We received three proposals. We've been meeting and reviewing those proposals. And just some of the initial feedback we've got from the proposals is that they're anticipating a six to eight months architectural design timeframe and then put it out to construction and have a completion date at the earliest of the end of twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five for the public works facility. So if we want to... Did I misspeak?
Yes.
Yes, twenty-three and twenty-four. So it would be completion of the construction at the end of twenty twenty-three, because we would begin at the beginning of twenty twenty. And then the timeframe, so what we're finding in the city hall of the public works building, or excuse me, the public safety building are the second phase, if you want to call it. And that would, because we're going through some property acquisition options and negotiations there, I gave us till the end of twenty twenty-two to kind of see what that looks like and acquire the property to give us access on Highway eighty-nine. So if we were to do exactly what we're doing with the public works facility about a year from now for the city hall and the public safety, that would put us out for completion at the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five timeline. And then, of course, the third category is the general obligation bond for the recreation community center, the park facility and landscaping. That would go on the November twenty twenty-two election ballot. And of course, depending on whether that's voted upon and approved, then we would move forward with that. Some of the things that we're taking into consideration is what this looks like from an infrastructure standpoint. So the good thing with the first phase is we've included the site working utilities for the entire site, not just the public works facility. The, the last thing we want to do is go in and tear up brand new, anything to put in something else. So we want to be mindful of the process of what we're putting in and how that, how that affects the already built or constructed buildings. So I've kind of outlined it like that, that's just an option. As we've talked in the past, we've kind of been given the impression that we might move forward with the project altogether, which is fine, but we do have those options of issuing the bonds at different timelines that we're not paying interest on money that we haven't spent yet or don't need to spend yet as we move ourselves through the process.
And just keep in mind too, and Brandon may speak a little bit more to this, but typically the IRS requires you, once you do issue your bonds, and once that money's in your account, that you have three years to spin down those proceeds. So if you know you have a project that may be going into twenty twenty-five, that maybe isn't a terrible idea to wait to bond for some of those until you get closer to the project start, you know, that time period. So as Ginny kind of emailed me this today and we talked about it, you know, I think this is actually a wise idea to potentially split some of these up, so you have the funds available that you need now versus, you know, city and paying interest on funds that may eventually get you into a little bit of trouble with the IRS if you don't spend them quick enough. So just a thought on that. I told you...
Yeah, Marcus.
Oh, go ahead, Brandon.
Sorry, I just read, to re- reiterate what you were saying, under the IRS regulations, because these bonds, we text, tax exempt. Typically, it's three years. It can be extended to five years. So but, but five years is kind of the hard and fast date unless there are extenuating circumstances.
And so I, I told Ginny what we can do depending on your direction, or even if it's just beneficial, maybe she can email us out. We can kind of run a sensitivity analysis to say, okay, if we wait a year, eight months, whatever that timeline, timeline is to kind of separate these, how much interest would you be saving based off today's rates if we were to issue those in two tranches? Because really, you'd just be saving about, you know, five million dollars, six million dollars worth of interest accrual for a year. And how much would rates have to go up in order to offset that? Because what you're really risking is if we don't issue it one tranche, then we kind of are saying that we don't necessarily think rates are going to exceed a certain amount in the next year that would have offset it. Because then when you go to issue your second piece, the hope is that it hasn't gone up by, let's say, fifty basis points or a hundred basis points, whatever that magic number is, to make it less beneficial than just issuing it in one tranche. So we can put that together, so it just kind of spells it out, you know, what kind of that buffer is by issuing it all today versus in two tranches. But again, I don't think it's out of the ordinary if you just say, this is kind of a pretty clear-cut decision. We're just going to issue two pieces because we know the projects are, this one's not near enough complete compared to the other two type of situation. So that would also be a wise choice as well, but whatever the council wants.
I brushed the ball out.
That's right.
What, what do you recommend if you should happen to our Brandon? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
This is our first time, and I know you discussed it with Jenny at length. What is the recommendation that we counsel besides on this?
I'd like to run the numbers just to see what it is, because if it's more than twenty-five, fifty basis points, then it's, it's pretty obvious that you should wait. But also too, I think it's, it's always a good idea to not bond until you really have the project bid out, under, you know, the feedback from the architect. And so understanding that the city hall and the police station aren't quite as far along as the public works facility and the site works, you know, I, I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing to potentially break this up into two different pieces. I mean, the relative cost is probably going to be maybe five to ten thousand dollars difference between issuing it in two bonds versus one tranche of bonds, but that's pretty minimal with the size of bonds that we're looking at. So I, I think just doing it in two tranches is usually the best way. And then when we go talk to purchasers that are interested, they may say, well, hey, do you have any, you know, feedback from the architects? Do you have any rendering? You know, we want to see the project. Well, we could say, yeah, we, we could, you know, get you in touch with the architect or get you whatever you need for the public works, but we don't really know about the other two. You know, that gives them a little bit of pause, like, gosh, are they biting off a little bit more than they can chew right now for a project that isn't quite material yet? So I definitely think issuing it in two tranches may be the better option long-term for the city. And then the nice thing is, when you issue it in two tranches too, then it kind of gives you a little bit of time to get used to that first debt service payment. So when Ginny's doing her budget, when everything's kind of coming in, you can kind of say, okay, now we have X amount of dollars we need to pay this year. Let's make sure we're getting everything in correctly. You know what I mean? At least you can take it in pieces and then all of a sudden, you may come back and say, gosh, we didn't expect it was going to be this much, or maybe there's been a turn in the economy or, you know, something along those lines. Then you can maybe pause a little bit on those second pieces if you need to. So I like issuing it in two pieces.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
So you're saying that the, the police and the city hall are your...
So I'm basing this on our experience with the public works and getting things going in the process, knowing that we also need that access to Highway ninety-nine as well going through that process. So we, we've moved at a fairly quick timeline on public works. And we've been fortunate that the proposals came back as soon as we could meet with them and interview them. So we, Justin, help me, it's probably third of the last month or so that we've been put out RFP, received the proposals, been through the review process.
Yeah, Justin Schinzel. Really, it's probably been three months from when we originally put out to Matthew, I said the engineer, that we needed an RFP. And his team has worked through that. Took about a month-long process to get them out. Two weeks for people to kind of sit down and throw their proposals together. And in the last two weeks, we've been doing interviews and making the decision on which engineering, for your architectural engineering, for what we're going with. And like Jimmy said, we've had three really good interviews. And I think by the end of this week, we'll have it down to the final theme. So with the timeline, you know, we could probably sometime in twenty twenty-two finish off the, the police and, and city offices. But as we've learned here in the last few weeks, it's probably very beneficial to take some time and do a lot more research on, you know, our hands are kind of tied with the public works building because we are on a timeline. It would be very beneficial for Chief Wilson, Ginny and the admin staff, and even Brian and his staff to be able to look at some other projects and some other things that say, wow, we wouldn't really expecting it to go into this in-depth this fast that we've learned very quickly. So the timeline, I would say, you know, in a good three to, three to five months to get that total of people process done. Yeah, another three to five months for the rest of this process.
Three to five right now that we take into...
Yes.
And then when you go into the next phase, I guess we're going to call it another.
So early twenty twenty-three is when I was anticipating being ready to put out an RFP for the city hall, public safety. But obviously, we can try to exp, but I doubt, but that's also balancing staff's responsibilities with everything else that's going on as well, without giving, dedicating all of our time to just doing this and knowing that it takes some time for us to go through the process of... Property owners, nearby property owners. We do want to contact with somebody to make sure they're aware of this need. Has to do, that, like, to Justin's point with, it's very comprehensive when you meet and they do a needs assessment after the RFP so that they can go into the design phase. And to be honest, I don't know that we know that yet. It's try, try and get our hands on what we're going to need for the next future. We want to be wisely, you don't want to... One of the things we're considering with the public works, because we have had to work at an expedited speed, is the architect firms that we've been talking to are even doing the layout of the buildings for potential growth in the future. So say we build this structure, it meets our needs, but we'll be able to expand onto it in the future after however many years. And those are some things that have caused us to pause on what the city hall, the rec center, and the public safety with that. Also, in the campus style that we've been proposing, is that going to be affected if we need future growth? There's just a lot of things that we've been trying to consider. So I think that's a very, maybe on the general side, think that it might take us the rest of twenty twenty-two, we might be able to be a little bit ahead, but from what Marcus has indicated, it's very flexible when we issue the bonds. We just want to be responsible with it, I guess. Trying to, trying to put our big, big people shoe, big kids shoes on here and make these hard decisions, but do it wisely.
I think one of the things I learned over discussing this with the, those architects, what we want, what we need, we know we want a building, but what do you want? What are our needs as far as we've been in this small building for so long? We don't know what's really out there. We need to go and tour some other facilities. And that's really nice. I've never thought of that. Maybe we want some of those things before we just... The public works, Justin's been touring some of them, so just a wish list of what we want beside these buildings.
So what we're doing now, we're watching interest rates and at the same time, costs of materials.
Marcus, you just said something about interest rates.
Yes, so rates have gone down over the last couple of weeks, but that doesn't really mean that, you know, the trend's still going up. But hopefully, it's stabilized, that's kind of what we're hoping for. But again, what I can send over to Ginny is just a sensitivity analysis and have her email it out to the council here. Again, you don't have to decide today. I think it's maybe just, eventually we'll need some direction, because when we go reach out to purchasers and get a little RFP together, we need to help them understand, you know, what, you know, is it going to be a twelve million dollar bond or a six million dollar bond? And that may affect the rates as well. But I, I think you've hit it on the head. What's the cost benefit, right? If materials go up, if rates go up, then all of a sudden, our, our good intentions of trying to be responsible stewards with the money and trying to save a year, eight months, whatever that timeline is worth of interest disappears pretty quick. And so I, I don't think there's really a wrong way to do it. I, I do think the more practical way is probably separating it, just because, again, I would say, take your time with this, because these will probably be the largest bonds that the city issues for a long time. So make sure it is a city hall that you want, the design, the police station you want. Everything's kind of to your specifications and your design, and don't feel rushed about it, because there's nothing you can do about interest rates. You're not going to be able to beat the market. I would just say, issue the bonds when you're ready to go. Don't try to delay. Alls are worth advice on it.
So our resolution tonight is not included, correct?
Correct. It's up to...
Up to fifteen million.
Correct. So, so, so what you're doing is you're, you're designating authorized representatives, which would be Ginny and the mayor, to be able to move forward with bonds up to these parameters that you're setting. So once this parameters, our resolution is passed, once we do the public hearing, because we're doing this all now, because we have thirty-day notice period and contest period, so we're trying to get those boxes checked. Once that's all done, the Ginny, the mayor, and I believe it says finance director, which, okay, finance director, perfect, would have the authority to lock in rates and do a bond based off the parameters that you're setting. So at that point, you could direct Ginny and the mayor kind of say, well, great, we want to do the six million, we want to do these two projects. We're going to hold off because we don't think we're quite ready for the other two. They may have the authority on behalf of the city to engage a purchaser or an underwriter and move forward with closing the bonds, signing the documents and giving the proceeds to your account.
So if you bifurcate the projects, where there's no way to lock in at the lower interest rate, we're kind of at the mercy of the second phase of what the current interest rate would be at that time, correct?
Correct. So if you don't lock in the full amount, then yes, you, that, until you sell the other, we got the tranche, other series of bonds for the next phase of your projects, then the market's just going to be what the market is, unfortunately. But again, I, I feel like the market's been priced in so much and there's so much fear in it already. I, I can't tell you where it's going to be or, or else I'd be in Wall Street. But if I, yeah, but anyways, I, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing, though. I think this really is probably the, the path that most people do. It's just to say, we're only going to bond for the projects that we've done our due diligence, we've currently done, and then we're going to wait to do the remaining projects once we have an idea of what we need. Because here's what may happen. You may borrow fifteen million dollars. Great, you get this one done. Materials may shoot up fifty percent. And at that point, you may not want to do the other projects, but all of a sudden, you bonded for it. So now you're four million dollars short with seven million dollars in your account that you don't know what to spend on, because you can't build anything with it. So again, we don't want you to be in a bad situation, because we understand how important your sales tax is to the city. It's the lifeblood of the city for the most part. So we want to make sure it's being used responsibly.
So what we're saying here is that if you go ahead and approve this resolution, what you're doing is giving the city, representatives, the staff, the ability to go forward. Is that right?
Up to, we have to seven.
That's what Brandon's heard in this resolution. Since you asked, in my opinion, if you guys ask for this, this is what we've been doing a little bit late. I believe this is what we want to do.
Do you feel 15 million?
So fortunately, we were able to get a little bit of a feel for that with the Public Works RFP. It, it came in, some of them projected the cost of the building based on square footage. And again, we went into some discussion on whether we could base it or potential growth in the future with that. But yeah, it came, it came in maybe a little bit on the high end. I would, not enough that it alarmed me. It was more than what we had maybe set aside, but not enough that I, I feel like we don't have a built in buffer of what we've projected here. But to Marcus's point, to be able to go forward with one one element of it and then reassess and reevaluate before we put the other foot in the pool. That maybe it's our benefit to kind of see how it goes through the, the public process of it. So I wish I knew, I'm sorry, I wish I knew how much it was going to cost, but I kind of get to the point of what our needs are as well. I can tell you what we don't need, but it's hard to tell you what we do need. Yeah. But I am committed to give you the best information I can to provide that for you through the whole, the whole project.
So we would, if we bond, I mean, if it is to the two pieces, we do the first piece. If we get the second piece, we have the same, then again, it's council, would that just be that and future and when it be done?
So under this adoption of this resolution, you've given, you'll give us the authority to do that?
The whole 15 million.
Uh huh. Yes.
Interest rates goes sky high, materials just sky high, just stop, right? I mean, we've got to be public works.
Yes, yes. If we do it in two.
Do the one piece, we're stuck spinning that, that, correct? Even if we can't, surely.
Yes.
You're getting everything you want. Okay, this is a gas mask though. Yeah. Again, we're still, we're still at that kind of interesting phase of this project. Where as soon as we assign the award for the architect, the first thing that design firm is going to do is come to our facility, do a tour. We're going to spend about two to three days doing needs assessments with the staff. You know, what needs do we absolutely need to have to maintain vehicles, to maintain railways, maintain stormwater. So all, all the needs of the city, right? So say the, the few architects, they've, they've got some really good mechanical and structural engineers on their teams that have kind of been able to give me a little input prior to saying for sure that, yeah, we're going with that. On things of other sites that they've done that will make sure that we are taking care of for I, we would hope as staff that this would be a 50 year benefit. That, that through the next 50 years, this building without having a major overhaul or facelift would last 50 years.
Something we don't be able to have our needs, right?
I would have a problem down there, fully enough, but I just more think shouldn't. But it's all said and done, I don't want to hope it'll last 50 years. I want to get there to nail it down as close as possible that everything we need is being done for that, that project. And, and even a little bit, you know, if we have to go into the future, that's where I'm looking at. And then we'll see where we're at in the next. Make sure we get this done, what we need.
Any more questions? You ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Parisville Resolution 22 dash 15, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a sales tax for hoop bonds with this company. To, do you want to put a figure in?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed 15 million.
Okay, I have a motion for the second. Councilmember Lemon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Great discussion. I know this is a big, big step forward for the city. I think we need to make sure that we've got all your questions answered and got all the people involved. We need to. Thank you very much. Item B, discussion possible action to adopt Parisville Resolution 22 dash 14. The policy procedures amendment. Mayor? Let me just pull up. Right, it's got a very, there. So this, this resolution has three parts to it. And the first part, I'll go ahead and turn the time over. Chief Wilson to address the police pay scale section.
So this is the same pay scale that we presented back the wage study a little bit ago. So you guys have all seen this. What this is meant to do is to try to retain the employees that we have. In doing so, to go with the raises that are listed here, we've listed about what, what training requirements that we're going to expect our officers to have with those goals. So we kind of, we're not sure how to justify what, what exactly we're paying these guys for. We're not just giving a raise because they've got so many years. We're not giving a raise because they actually have some requirements to get before they'll, they'll hit these step raises. Does everybody have a chance to look at these or if you have any questions? Some of these hours, and I don't want you to get confused. Like in Officer One, that has the 179 hours of training. So they'll have that in before they, so we hire 24, they have that in before they get their $25 an hour. When you drop down, it's not 275 more, that's 275 with the other ones. So, yeah. When we put this together, we have it put from all the officers. And when you look at this, not only are we making a better department by doing this, but we're also building the rest made for our officers. So hopefully they're gonna stay. But I mean, we're requiring a lot of these guys. I don't know of a lot of other departments, but we expect each one of our guys to be an instructor at something. So they can teach us, they bring everything back here. So training is a big thing for, for us and I think it's going to pay off in the long run. But for the most part, everybody's having input on, on how we've done this.
I guess another question, how does this compare other departments and offices? Are we close?
This will keep us hopefully in that we've been pretty conservative. So this is conservative. This doesn't include what we've had for cost of living and it doesn't include like merit raises. If we don't do merit raises every year or something, then we'll be back in the same place we were in, in short time. So yeah, something to consider. But as far as this goes, I think this is a good foundation. So, and, and this is minimum. We can always approve something more, but this would be the minimum set that all systems.
Any more questions?
So looking at your crystal ball. Okay, as you said, this is a basic foundation. Where do you see this going as far as maybe a term like that? I mean, we're structuring this building at this point.
Yeah, it's just trying to say what, what, what happens. I mean, there's no way to know. It's so hard to hire people right now. It we're finally fully staffed for the first time in a long time. This is, I think, the longest that we've been fully staffed since I've been teaching almost three years now. So it's extremely hard to keep guys and extremely hard to find good guys. And if you look at some of these other departments that are hiring and they'll hire just the people that they get a list and they'll just take the list through evils. They're, they're getting, they're running through those guys too. So we try to hold off and I mean, we want good people here. You pay a little extra for these guys, your liability goes down as far as the kind of employees you have. So, yeah, I think this is a good foundation, but it's hard to say if, if it'll hold up. Soon as we give our last pay increase, then you have Roy and we were counting looking to go, you know, this is a battle. It really is a battle. And that's, and sometimes you can't keep up with, with just pay. Sometimes you have to look at other, other avenues to, to be more competitive, more, a better place to work, not just in, in pay. You know, we need to be competitive, but we're better in, in another area. We're better at benefits. We're better the way we treat our employees, you know? Pay's not everything. It's, you know, usually a large part of it. It's not everything by any means.
That benefit preservation. Chief Wilson here will be the first first Parisville Police Officer, beginning career and end of year. And I think says a volume, that's what our goal should be. Everybody, we're for should have that same goal of like, take care of it.
So we have the culture. We just need to keep up with the wages. We have a very good culture in the city so far. So.
Chief Wilson's not going in. Thank you.
So I'll draw your attention back to section one, which we do have Director Pike available as well. These two other amendments are related to the recreation department. The, the, the first one is related, we have a practice of hiring minors to help with our youth recreation program. But as, and maybe I should give you an additional background. For the last few months, the department has a meeting going through the policy and procedures manual. We've just taken different areas of the manual and gone over them. And some of these things that were, that are coming to our attention, we're trying to address and adopt new policies that are either in line with the practices or that are better suited for, for the city. So this is one of these examples. So we have the practice of hiring minors for our youth recreation program, but our current policy excluded and prohibited us from hiring anyone under 16. But other 16 minors are fully capable of doing the scorekeeping and all of the things related to our youth recreation program. So the first section is just modifying that to the minors and it is adopting this state code that outlines what minors are allowed to, to do. I, since I'm using the draft policy that we sent in your packet, I should draw to your attention that I corrected this typo here. It should read before, after school in excess of four hours a day, not hour hours a day. That has been corrected in the resolution. Just noticed that. Thank you to the mayor for noticing that. And the second section is related to background check guidelines. We also have Director Pike has gone by these guidelines when conducting criminal background checks for those individuals that are working with vulnerable populations. This just formally adopts those guidelines into our policy that these are the things that we're, are going forward with regulating people that are working with their vulnerable populations. So there are a few things defined and the application process, review process and if we have to disqualification process is outlined in that. Please, here as well for any questions or if you have questions.
Make a question on the side.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 22 dash 14.
Motion for the second. Councilmember Lemon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item C, item, yes, item C, discussion possible actions to adopt Harrisville ordinance I-35, which is a CP2 commercial zone amendment. And Jenny?
So this background on this, I'll just kind of briefly go over the staff memo, put it in your packet. It comes with a positive recommendation from Planning Commission at their May 11th meeting. On April 26th, we received application from Triple Peaks LLC to amend our commercial uses to include outdoor swimming pools as an approved use. A public hearing was held at the May 11th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting to receive public comment. And what we found in reviewing this application is the commercial recreation definition does include swimming pools. But under our commercial uses, it was only a permitted use in commercial indoor recreation facility. The application we received for our commercial site plan includes an outdoor swimming pool. And so we do, that does recommend a positive recommendation of this ordinance to be approved as a conditional use permit to mitigate the impact on the great properties when allowing outdoors swimming pool. Happy to take any questions regarding that. It's a simple use change. We have one public comment from the public there, which was water related, water conservation related, which was addressed by Director Shinsol from Public Works. Some of the input was due to the drought, obviously any recommendations that are given by our water districts, we would be team. They follow, but this is a change to our code. So allow to use in the future, your conditions. Yes. They are as part of their event center that they are proposing for that site plan. But there are not to guarantee that that's going to happen. There are other issues, geotext studies, water table things that are in that process. So this would allow it to be considered on that site plan. Yes.
So I don't know where Triple Peaks versus to go.
It's on the highway. It's the far upper now.
Oh, okay.
And now they're, they're reviewing that.
A lot of residents, that's not the this one.
This is one I'm hearing. So it would be here. The site plan they proposed goes to about here.
Who would be west?
Who will be?
That is the isolated life residents that would be like, sorry.
And that is one of the things that the staff consider that the conditional use permit is that it's outlined hours of operation, lights, all of those types of things can be taken into consideration with the use.
Any additional questions for staff? Any additional questions for staff? Questions? Now, are you ready for a motion? Yes.
I'll move into adopt Harrisville Ordinance 535. CP2s on this. Second.
Motion for the second. Councilmember Lemon?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christiansen? Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. All right, that concludes the major portion of our agenda today. Number four, this is an opportunity for those in the public to come forward if you have anything to like, for the city. Much of the volume, state your name, you have three minutes. If not, I think I'll just go on to number five, which is mayor council's follow up. This council, anything that we have to bring up tonight, Robert?
I'll just, as far as services and make sure I'm just watching. Is there anything else to be included?
Let's see, we can feedback this, that my knowledge is received. About splash cuts. If.
Follow the county fireworks on fire.
If you've always followed the county, you know, we just have to do this in the past and it's just easier to. I've thought about that, but that's kind of close. Anybody else?
The only question I have is for Brian, are we still going to do fireworks in October or?
I don't know. Planted on this, I told everyone.
Okay, because we've talked about it. My wife and I were talking about it the other night. She was just like, I won't.
Yeah, they're, they're ordered, they're, they're paid for actually. So we can extend that to the following year. Planted on this, I told everyone.
All right, thank you. That's all.
All right.
Just a shout out, say thanks. Brian, I just, I'm all. I said, get a call, said, go wire. As long as you've been so, you know, yeah. Why, why? Like, take care of the response. Sure.
Yeah, I'm happy to staff. Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's on a weekend, something like that, the response. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. I have a couple of items that you might want to calendar for the future. You're going to be looking at our budget next month and we need to do some dates in August. So our August 2nd, choose a taxation hearing will be, months will be different as far as our dates from council meeting. So we'll be on August 7th and then we'll have a two week probationary period. I guess that will come up. And then we'll have our August 16th, be the new budget. That'll be a little bit different than that. And staff, anything else? That's it. Thanks for having this session. We've had a lot. We'll have a lot in June. Maria, this is the person she did. So thank you very much for. Thank you, we're happy to have her. She's filled up a big hole in the city. So with that, I have a motion for the term.
A motion.
Oh, yeah.
So wait a second.
Not fair.
All right.